More.
Here.
This is Rich.
Here.
This is Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzik?
Here.
Mr. Levens.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to open the meeting with a budget presentation.
Okay, the 2019 budget scheduled for public hearing and adoption this evening. I want to thank all the departments and council again for their work on this. And I want to just go over some, highlight some of the changes, and we'll get into, I'll go a little more specifics in, in the different departments. Basically, the change in your current fund expenditures over the prior year, the net was $119,676. The salary and wage increases totaled $156,218. That was a combination of non-union and union contracts, and the addition of position when we split out tourism and recreation into two. Some of the changes, we had grants in prior years that are not coming forward. Pension, there was a reduction of $22,880. We had to appropriate a special emergency of $35,000. That is from a bond ordinance that we had to do an emergency for last year. And then when you do that, you have to bring that forward the following year as an appropriation. Change in our debt service of $57,719. And the biggest one was a change in our capital improvement fund for down payments and actual cash. Jim had mentioned in the workshop when we were talking about the bond ordinance, and that's $200,000. And then overall spread out between all the miscellaneous accounts in the general government, there was an increase of $101,740. And there, you get your net of $119,676. No, sorry. There we go. Went too far. It's out of control, sorry. I'm trying to get back. There we go, sorry. Okay, change in the current fund revenues. Again, that's $119,676. Increase in the use of our fund balance of $93,157. Increase in our local revenue of $147,000, decrease in our grants of $396,000, a decrease in the amount that we could anticipate in delinquent taxes of $30,000. This is actually a good thing. That means that our, the amount of taxes we collected for the current year last year, we had a better tax collection rate. But just bringing that forward, that means that you can't, there's less to anticipate because you've already collected it. And then just other special items of $26,000, and that's a change in the levy of $280,000. And the levy cap calculation, prior year amount was $11,850,000. When you add in the legal increase of 2% cap of $237,000, that gave us an adjusted levy prior to any exclusions that we would have to take off of $12,870,000. You take off your, you take your deferred charges, capital improvement fund, and any unexpended balances, meaning your, your adjusted levy was $12,401,443. You're allowed to add in based on your new, new ratables from new construction, on your prior year's tax rate, that was $707,000? That's prior bank, sorry. So the maximum allowable that we could have raised with taxation was $13,109,98. Our budget is calling for $12,130,000, so we have an actual bank of $979,98. Status of our spending cap, cap base from prior year, $10,629,483. And if you did the COLA increase of 3.5, you could have gone to $11,1,514. Additions to it would have been $404,000, so our allowable would have been $11,405. Our budget expenditures are actually $10,812,131. So there's a remaining excess that we did not utilize that you could have of $593,819.75. Okay, so your local tax levy and your assessed value. So there's a change, as I mentioned, $280,000 over the prior year, which is a 2.36% increase. We're looking at the tax, local tax rate going from 24.6 cents to 25.1 cents, which is half a cent, and that's 2.12%. Assessed value, we realized a .10% increase of $4,658,800. So what does this do to property owners in Stone Harbor, this half a cent increase? So if you had an assessed value of a million dollars in local taxes in 2018, you would have paid $2,460. In this year's budget, if adopted as is, you would be, you will be paying $2,510, which is an increase of $50. And then if you go all the way down to 2.5 million assessed value, you would have paid $6,150. You're going to pay $6,275, which is an overall increase of $125 over the prior year. Okay, condition of our fund balance. Okay, we had, last year, we had available $2.86,069. This year, we had $2,892,478. Change of $86,409. We're using in this year's budget, $1,653,990. We'll have remaining $1,238,479, just slightly less than the prior year, but still a healthy balance, and within our range that we always like to stay within. Sorry. So our fund balance regeneration, how did we get back the money that we anticipated in the budget? So, and this is 17 to 18. Obviously, we, next year, we'll be able to see how we did in the 19. So we had $2,806,000 at the end of 2017. We were able to regenerate $1,647,251.81, and we utilized in the budget $1,560,843.47. So they, at the end of 2018, we had $2,892,477.58, and we utilized 56% of the available fund balance. Okay, tax rates in Cape May County. This is the local tax rates. As of 2018, you can see that Stone Harbor was at 24.6 cents. We were the fifth lowest in the county. Then in overall tax rate, when you add in your, the local, the county, and the school taxes, we are the second lowest. Avalon is, is slightly lower than ours, but we came in with an overall of 55.2 cents in 2018. Obviously, we don't know where we'll lie in 2019 because everyone's still in the process of adopting all of their budgets, but I don't anticipate any major, major change there. I suspect that we would still be the second lowest in the county. Okay, percentage of tax collection. As you can see, we improved from 98.21% to 98.29%. Using for the reserve and our collection, actual collection rate went from 99.13% to 99.46%, which is excellent. And again, why we were unable to anticipate $30,000 compared to the prior year. So we had to make, that's part of the money that we had to anticipate in new taxes this year. Okay, this just kind of shows you where all of our revenues come from. And the bulk, obviously, is our local property taxes. We have local revenues from all of our fees is our, our next biggest one, but still, there's a great disparity there. And then use of surplus. And our appropriations compared to 2018 to 2019, the biggest expense we have is in our salaries. Then you would drop to other expenses, and your debt service would be the next. Okay, then moving into the various committee responsibilities, admin and finance. Manchurah is the chair, and Charles and Reese serve on this committee for 2019. The total administration and finance is up $92,103, or a 3% increase. Other expenses is up $63,432, and that's 2.93%. The most significant increase is in the employee group health insurance, which increased by $70,000. And salaries are up by $28,671, or 3.22%. And the functional areas for admin and finance include the council administrator, municipal clerk, engineering and finance for administration. Tax administration would include your tax collection and tax assessment. You have your planning and zoning boards, your legal services, your construction office, and then your insurance, which would include your medical, your general liability, workers' comp, property, and vehicle insurance. And this is kind of a pie chart that lets you know what percentages overall. And as you can see, insurance is the biggest at 58%. Okay, then we go into public safety. We have Bob Levens as chair, Josie and Ray serve on this committee. The overall public safety budget is up $49,380, or 1.43%. Municipal court, public defender, and emergency management, other expenses remain flat. Fire code official increased by $4,700, and that was for computer software. Police OE increased by $8,900, and again, that was for new software maintenance. And salary and wages are up $28,277, or, and that's 1.14%. And our inter-local agreement on dispatch increased by $5,953, and that was 2%. Animal control slightly up by $1,200, and that is for additional trappings around municipal building. Okay, the functional areas. We have our police department, we have fire department EMS, municipal court, which would include your public defender and prosecutor, your uniform fire code, office of emergency management, fire hydrant service, your beach patrol and taggers, and animal control. And as you can see, the biggest chunk of the pie is for the police department at 49.1%. Okay, public works. Okay, we have Ray as the chair, and Charles and Bob serve on the committee. The overall increase is $44,670, or 2.5%. Operating budget has a decrease of $8,600. OE, public works OE increased by $4,000. Solid waste OE increased by $1,000. Buildings and grounds increased by $10,300. Safety compliance increased by $1,500. Landfill fees decreased by $25,400. And salary and wages increased by $53,270, or 3.41%. And the majority of that is under union contract. Functional areas are the department, public works labor pool, your solid waste, your grounds, your special events, and safety compliance. And as you can see, the labor pool is your biggest at 52.4%. And natural resources, you have Josie as chair, and Ray and Reese serve on the committee. The budget for 2019 remained flat. Salaries of $25,000 are associated with the bird sanctuary and point maintenance, and there was no increase. And other expenses remain flat at $61,000. Okay, you have your beach and your dunes, you have your back bays, you have your bird sanctuary, and you have the Stone Harbor Point. Okay, and again, as you can see, the breakdown, and it's same as 2018. Okay, recreation and tourism. Charles is the chair, and you have Josie and Manchurah on the committee. And recreation, tourism saw an overall increase of $52,428, or 13.29%. And this is, is due to creating the two separate positions for recreation and tourism. Recreation, sorry, recreation OE increased by $4,130, and tourism increased by $3,198. Overall salaries and wages increased by $45,100. Okay, and your function areas is recreation, tourism, and the marina. And as you can see, the, the biggest chunk is recreation services at 52.1, and then tourism comes in at 40.5%. Okay, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Jim, and he'll go into the debt service and finish up through the utilities.
So, current fund debt service, debt service is the annual principal and interest payment that is required by the debts, debts issued. This year, it's a little over $4 million, which is almost about the same as last year. We have three different types of debt payments. We have general obligation loans, which are serial bonds. We have two of them outstanding, a 2011 issue, which had a balance a little over $6 million at the end of the year, and a 2018 issue that we issued last year with $27,455,000. We also have NJEIT loans. Those are issued in conjunction with water sewer infrastructure improvements. They're issued with a AAA bond rating from the state of New Jersey, and they also include interest-free portions and loan forgiveness. We have three of those loans outstanding, a 2010 issue, a 2012 issue, and a 2015 issue. The third type of loan payment that's not listed is the bond anticipation note, which we do not have any this year because of the issue in the 2018 bond last year. Oh, I'm looking for the change in my screen. Okay, that is created by, when council approves a capital, a capital improvement ordinance. There's two on for tonight, one for the, for the general capital fund and one for the water sewer fund. The general capital fund requires a 5% minimum down payment. And this year, there's, as Jill mentioned, there's three projects, and they're 100% funded. They total $300,000, and they're beach-related and back bay-related items. The, anything on the, in the, in the ordinance is also on the, is in the official budget document, and all those projects are listed in the back of that document. And not all, not all debt is financed in, by serial bonds, NJEIT loans, or bands. This year, that totals $645,878. And some of the, most of those, most of that outstanding balance will be paid in succeeding year's budgets. This year's budget includes about $70,000 to reduce that balance, and it'll probably grow in future year's budgets. And every year, we're required to file an annual financial, an annual debt statement. And in that annual debt statement, which is usually due by the end of this, by the January 30th of the year, it lists all debt that is outstanding in the borough, and the debt is either, can be financed with, with, with bonds and bands, and also debt that has been authorized but not issued, as far as any debt being issued. There's a 3.5% debt limit for municipalities. That limit in Stone Harbor would be $158 million. As of December 31st of 2018, the net debt for Stone Harbor equalled 38, lower over $38 million, and was .857%. And this shows you where we're at. We try to keep the debt service level over the years. So the, the yellow, the yellow represents the 2018 bond issue that, that was issued. The purple is the bands that we anticipate issuing in future years, and then the red will be the 2013, 2023 issue. And again, just to keep the debt level. General capital, here's some of the items that we are including in the bond ordinance that's, again, introduced tonight, and also in the 2018 budget. The items with an asterisk at the end, like the police equipment and computers, are funded 100% with capital, with surplus funds, and that totals $364,000 this year, which is about the same as last year. But, and then the top items are, are items that we, that we're issuing just a 5% down payment on. And some road improvements, some beach and bay improvements, solid waste trash truck, bulkhead, ADA improvements for beach access, a caseloader, and then the police equipment, the building improvements in Borough Hall, the beach patrol vehicle, and the equipment is, and some smaller public works items are all 100% cash. Okay, the water sewer fund. Reese is the chair, and Manchurah and Bob are also on the committee. This year, the budget is up 4.97% or $208,000. The other expense category of the budget increased $13,500, or 2.3%. The MUA fee increased $5,000, and that represents about 40% of the total budget. Debt service increased $128,982, or 8.5%. And that increase was mostly for the bond anticipation notes and the principal down payment required. Statutory charges increased $50,567, and capital increased by $10,000. There are the areas of function. Operate the pump stations, the water system, the sanitary sewer pump station, the wells, the water tower, and the billon. And there's the revenues by broken, that's not the right chart. No, that's not the right chart, yeah. There's the appropriations. Other expense, that number, that chart represents $2.2 million, and it's up slightly over last year. And again, the MUA is almost 40% of that, of that category. And there's debt, that's about $1.7 million. And it's up from last year because of the band payments, the principal payments required on the bond anticipation notes. Capital is at $90,000, which is showed before is up $10,000. And this year, we're paying $72,000 in the budget for recurrent capital items instead of issuing debt. And salary and wages is exactly the same as last year at $407,500. And there's some of the capital projects that are included in the ordinance that's being introduced tonight. We have road and infrastructure, we have infrastructure improvements associated with road improvements of $2.2 million, meters and IRT upgrades for $200,000, stormwater, drinking water, sanitary sewer improvements for $2 million, 80th Street Engineering for $55,000, utility truck for $85,000, and asphalt pipe replacement for $50,000.
Okay, that is the end of the presentation, and I would just like to encourage anyone to go onto the borough's website. The, this presentation will be there along with other financial information, our, our debt statements, our annual financial statements. The detailed department budgets are also on there if someone wants to get into the nitty-gritty of, of what each department is, is appropriating this year.
So it's worth noting that there is a lot of road improvements going on, leading to the need for money, needing, leading to the need for the increase, as well as other improvements, and as well as trying to pay some of these things, some of these capital items in cash rather than finance them.
Correct. We've started that over the last couple of years, trying to increase that amount. So you're paying cash now, and in the long run, you're saving where you're not paying interest on debt service. So you'll start seeing, as we, we go forward, that there'll be less and less on the debt service side.
Well, above and beyond that, and I brought this up at our last A&amp;F meeting, is the bond fees associated with floating bonds is astronomical. And I know, Jim, you were going to look into that because of the fees that we were paying. So even if we get lower bond, lower fees associated with, and that's negotiable, even if we get that, I think the amount that we float also reduces those bond fees. So if we're floating less, we pay less.
Correct.
And we also increased our beach and bay?
We did.
Deposit?
We increased.
Or fund, I should say.
Additional $50,000 in each one for a total of additional $100,000 there. Additional fifty thousand in each one, for a total of additional hundred thousand there.
To build that up?
Correct.
Anybody have any observations, questions, before I open the public hearing? Public hearing on the budget is now open. Anybody like to come up and say anything concerning the budget? Have any observations, issues, problems, comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Resolution 2019 S-59.
I'd like to offer resolution S-59 for adoption.
Second?
This resolution adopts the budget for the year 2019.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Do I have any communications?
No, mayor.
Will now have public comment? Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Ordinance 1543.
I move that ordinance 1543 be taken up on second reading.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1543 on second reading?
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
The public hearing on ordinance 1543 is open. The public hearing is closed.
I move that 1543 be passed on second reading and advanced to third and final reading.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
This is, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1543 on third and final reading?
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
I move that ordinance number 1543 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according into, according to law. Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1544.
Madam Mayor, I offer ordinance 1544 for adoption.
Second?
Uh, this ordinance is adopting changes to sections 10.2 and removing section 11 pertaining to jitney fares.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1544 on second reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 488, jitneys of the revised general ordinances.
The public hearing on ordinance 1544 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1544 be passed on second reading and advanced to third and final reading.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1544 on third and final reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 488, jitneys.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1544 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1546.
I offer ordinance number 1546 for adoption. Second? This is a bond ordinance for various improvements.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1546 on first reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating five million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, and authorizing the issuance of four million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Bonds and notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Stone Harbor and the county of Cape May, New Jersey.
I move that ordinance 1546 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the seventh day of May, 2019. Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1547.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer motion, ordinance number 1547 be taken up on the first reading.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1547 on first reading?
A bond ordinance appropriating four million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and authorizing the issuance of four million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Bonds and notes of the borough for various water and sewer improvement systems or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Stone Harbor and the county of Cape May, New Jersey.
I offer a motion that ordinance number 1547 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it's taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption by, at, at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on seventh day of May, 2019.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
I also have a supplemental debt statement to want filed in my office pertaining to these bonds.
Ordinance 1548.
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1548 be taken up on first reading. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1548 on first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 420, vehicles and traffic of the revised general ordinances.
So, this is the, this is the ordinance that the solicitor discussed at the work session meeting about flooded roads. I move that ordinance 1548 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the seventh day of May, 2019.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1549.
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1549 be taken up on first reading.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1549 on first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter five of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Stone Harbor, regulation of unmanned aircraft.
This, this ordinance is the same as was discussed by the solicitor at the work session on the use of drones in the borough. I move that ordinance 1549 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the seventh day of May, 2019.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-60.
Um, I'd like to offer resolution 2019 S-60 for adoption. Second? This is establishing our protected beaches for 2019.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-61.
I offer resolution 2019 S-61. Um, this is a refund of utilities overpayment, refund checking amount of one thousand, ninety-five dollars to be issued to Margaret Slomering.
Second?
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-62.
I offer resolution 2019 S-62 for adoption.
Second?
Uh, this resolution is a, an adjustment for summer leak, back to the 2018 adjusted average rates for two properties.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-63.
I offer resolution 2019 S-63 for adoption.
Second?
This is a refund in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars for duplicate payment.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S-64.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 64 for adoption.
Second?
Uh, this resolution authorizes the increase in certain fees associated with the rec department as explained at our work session by our recreation director.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve a couple of special events, the Super Seven Rugby that we heard about last council meeting, the Wetlands Institute Summer Celebration, and several grill demonstrations at ACE.
I'd like to move that motion, please. Second?
Can I, I, the packet that I have, and maybe I'm short some things here, but the, the event application for the rugby, and I'm sure we all want to go forward with the rugby, but we're missing the fire approval, public works approval, and we're missing insurance certificates on this one. And I think there's some question about serving alcohol. They have to come forward for a borough license for that. Evidently, we have one for half a day or one day, and that hasn't been filed yet.
Is the page in the packet an old one that perhaps there's signatures on another one? Which should be, should show a complete review? I have, public works, safety officer, chief of police, fire.
They got the insurance certificate as well?
Not yet.
So.
So, we'll approve it contingent upon proof of insurance?
Yes.
And the alcohol issue is something that's to be determined at a later date?
Yes, that was, I went to that meeting today that Jen had, it was fantastic. And they, they are very willing to do everything and anything and follow all the rules. And one of them, that was discussed as to how, and we explained to them how the chamber does that for their event. So, they're learning, but they're also teaching us a lot of things about how this event's going to go. So, it was a great meeting.
Yeah, there, there is a one that's signed by everybody.
There is one, okay. Okay, so it has, it has circulated everywhere and it's been signed off on as far as those logistics, department head logistics. Okay.
It's what's posted in, in Dropbox has all the signatures on it, so I'm not sure what Ray has.
Okay.
I obviously have an old one, but that's fine, I get it, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so, we got the motion, we had the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we need a motion to approve a request from St. Mary's.
I'd like to make that motion, and that's for St. Mary's to do their church services at the Hundred and First Street Pavilion for the summer.
Second?
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we have no items of discussion on the agenda. May I have a motion approving the bill list?
I'd like to make a motion approving the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers are properly endorsed.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go into private session. We would appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back into public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session or to simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution 2019 S-65.
Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 65 for adoption.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.